We aren't completely certain as to what this project will come in at. At the highest, it's been around 4 million. And so while the city council is still working on the final cost, staff is still recommending not to exceed 4.25 million. So the council is being asked to hold the public hearing and accept input. And then after closing of the public hearing, council is being asked to consider adopting the resolution as is or approving the resolution with a lesser amount or a denial of the resolution or a table of the action. So with that, I will take any questions about the CIP. And again, Todd Hagan with Ellers, our financial advisor, is also here to answer any questions about this process as well.
If anyone would like to come up to the podium, please do. Maybe did we get any emails or phone calls? Any comments electronically?
We did not.
Okay. Any questions for council? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Is the resolution further down now, Maggie?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, let me get there. Yeah, so you're being asked to...
Approve the resolution now? We do that out of the closed meeting or out of the...
Yes. So yeah, with that resolution, you'd be approving both the...
For motion to approve resolution 8.10.20.28, the preliminary approval of the issuance of GO, capital improvement bond not to exceed $4,250,000, and adopting the City of Mayor Capital Improvement Plan.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Maggie. And that'll take us to 781, financing of the new tanker.
Yeah, so this... As you're aware, we did approve at a previous meeting the financing of the new tanker. So with that, we were gonna use 125,000 of fire department capital. And then the townships, the four of them, would be contributing between 8,500 to about 9,100. And that's based on an algorithm that we've created in the past for projects or equipment such as this. We go based on parcel number. And so with that, the remaining amount that the city is looking to finance is about 103,000 to be paid with property taxes. And I've been working with Todd to do a five-year loan. But with that, we are able to... Why I'm working with Todd on this is we're trying to get the best interest rate currently. And we're also trying to get the best proposal that we can as well. So with this, we're able to actually go to our local banks and get their... How do you say it? Their...
Proposal.
Proposal for this type of bond. And I don't know if you have specific questions, Todd. If you want to... If there's any questions for Todd on this. But yeah, our goal was to keep it local, but then try and get a more competitive process out there as well for the banks to propose on. Let me just get to the schedule. Yep, so tonight, we're doing the pre-sale review. And then, again, it would be a five-year payment schedule. And then, yep, so we would distribute the documents to, again, trying to keep it local, but trying to find a competitive proposals as well. And then we would bring it back to the city council on September 14th for the final review of...
Todd, is there anything you want to add? If so, why don't you come up to the podium, please?
So Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates. Maggie did a nice job of walking through both of those financings. Thank you. So we've had to really get luck with kind of local banks on these bonds between five and 10 years. It's a smaller bond issue. So we're hoping to get some good interest, you know, rates on the bonds. Typically, the local bank won't have any kind of call provision in there. So it'll be prepayable at any time with no penalty, too. So if you get some money, you want to get rid of the bonds, it'll be pretty easy to do that as well. And then if I could ask Maggie and Janelle, they can email me, too, of some of the banks that they would like to see in the area that might participate. We also have taken many bids from banks around the area. Done this for Waconia a couple times as well. And some in outstate Minnesota, too, that are kind of hungry for some investments right now. And so we'll just add them to the list and come back again pursuant to that schedule on September 14th and show you what we've got here. So yeah, it's a typical general obligation bond. It'll be easy for all the banks to understand what this is. And so that's our idea here is to run it through this kind of a system to get some local participation in it instead of some leasing company out in.
Good.
Tim Buck, too, right? I don't know if you guys have any questions for me. It's a pretty straightforward bond issue.
Questions for Todd? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, with that, then I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 8.10.20.21 to solicit bond bids for a five-year bond at $118,000.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries 4-0. That will take us to 782, Fire Station Project Budget and Concept Review.
Okay, so the discussion tonight is going to focus on the Fire Station project again. I'm just going to bring up some information up here. So since the last meeting, there was some suggestions from the council to bring back some new... A new concept design for the proposed fire station just to lower the cost. I think there were some concerns with where it was at. And so the architect and the building committee and the fire department and staff have been working together to look at options to reduce the cost a little bit more. So one preliminary change was that the new concept plan has been reduced from 12,890 to 11,210 in square feet. So that took off... Is Cory here?
Yes.
Okay. So that actually took off about 294,000 from the project. So there are pictures in the packet, and I will get to those. But it just shows... Let's see. It shows going... How the square footage was reduced. One being that... So as you can see in this first concept plan, there were nine bays. There was a day room. There was some more storage. And if you go to where you can see the reduction is up here on the top floor, we did reduce the mezzanine space significantly. And then... Let me just bring this out. Here, you can see that now we have eight bays, and we don't have that day room anymore. And some of the... That's kind of how we reduce... Or how the architect reduced some of the square footage. So it just kind of brought... It compacted the building quite a bit. So that was a significant change. And then also... I don't know if Cory wants to go through the cost change or if Tom's here. So with that reduction, the total construction cost went to 2.5... About 2.5 million. And then with total design, FFNE contingency, it's about 2.96 million. And then further considerations for the council. I apologize. This is not going very well. Are additions and reductions that we do... The architect does need some input on. And I know there are members of the building committee here as well to kind of... If you have any questions about... Hey, any changes. So I'm at the budget right now. So I did explain that there is a reduction in square footage from the original concept plan or the original design and how that took off about 294,000. And then kind of where the total project budget is currently and lists of additions and deductions we're about to go through. So yeah, so the council is being asked to discuss kind of these additions and deductions in order for the architect to move forward with final design work. Did you want to add anything, Tom?
Where it cuts out the two bays?
Yeah.
How is that... So this new number we have is minus both fees? The tower and these bays or...
The new number does not include that. So the 2.96, it is the reduced square footage only. If you want to take... To reduce the red even further, it would be... You would deduct the project costs even more.
Thank you.
Just want to interject here. That was actually the first drawing we had sent. We revised it shortly within about an hour with the adjusted cost.
Oh, okay.
A little closer. It's actually less than 253,000 savings. It's $200,000.
Okay.
So for chipping that off. To answer your question, the original budget that's been revised, we took out the square footage, reducing it down, eliminating the bay and making it squeezed down, still being able to function for all your needs. Is so total 2.9. And then everything below the 2.9 in the yellow would be either added or deducted. So you can see the budget. The deduct number three down there to eliminate the two truck stalls is actually $200,000. I apologize. There was some changes. It came shortly after initial email that was sent out. So basically, you take this... Look at those options. That's the cost to get out the bays.
So, okay. 2.9 takes out the bay and the host tower.
No, can you go back to the original?
I'm just confused. I just want to make sure I understand.
No.
Yeah.
2.9 is...
Can you stay closer to the microphone, please, Cory? The microphone will pick you guys up or carry it with you. It's just fine, too, if you...
Okay.
Thank you.
That would... The 2.9...
It's cordless here. I don't know if it's on.
But if we wanted it further than 2.9, we could... Okay.
These are... This is in the 2.9, and this is in the 2.9.
Because you just...
It's in the 2...
...everything a little bit.
Can you hear me now?
It's not amplifying you. It's just recording.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, so the goal... I mean, we heard you last... At the last council's work session, you know, you're more comfortable with something that's a little bit smaller. We took a bay out. And this is not a bay. This is two bays, okay? This had nine individual, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. There was another one here, nine. The building got shrunk, and we condensed it as much as we possibly could. We worked with the department, trying to make sure that we weren't taking something that was going to be completely essential. Don't get me wrong. This stings getting it down to this level. But I think, speaking for the department, based upon the conversations, we can make it work. A project is better than no project, right? That's kind of where it's at. And we wanted to come to you with the revision to that as well as some ideas on ways to help protect the bidding process moving forward. We are hopeful that this evening, you can ask any questions about the project and where it's currently standing. We would strongly urge for a commitment to move forward if it's at all plausible so that we don't miss this next opportunity for us to get favorable bidding.
How many... How many bays do we need? Eight?
I thought we needed nine.
So currently, we have nine apparatus, you know, including the boat. In this plan right here, can we fit everything in it? Yes, we can. But it meets only our immediate needs. It does not meet needs of any type of, you know, future, you know, possible. Any type of needs of, you know, if we... Ridgeview has said that, you know, if we had room for them, they would love to bail the station. You know, a truck in the station, it would not allow for that. You know, if we wanted to get an ATV or a UTV or something like that, it would make it very tight for anything like that. Some of the other stuff that were cut out, you know, can we live without it right now? Yes, this would meet our immediate needs. But it does not plan for the future very well at all.
Can... I'm just going to throw something out there. It's kind of weird. Well, not weird. So the fire station is going to be next to our Public Works building. I think our goal eventually also would be to add additional storage for Public Works. One was talking about moving this building to that space. I know that we don't want to necessarily share the space because we've had this conversation. I'm just going to throw it out there as an idea. I know that... I mean, I'm very happy with the numbers. It makes me feel more comfortable with where the numbers. I just want to talk with the financing about overall budget of the entire city, just like you do for a household for my safe. Sorry. Okay. So if we put up a pole barn or pole shed of some sort, there could possibly be some space sharing for the boat and a UTV. Now, I understand it's not an ideal situation, but it would be pretty much in the same area. I'm just throwing it out there for other ideas that I'm more comfortable at this number in doing a smaller footprint with the possibility of adding bays for future growth. And that would be a decision made 10, 15 years. But if we... If there was need for moving things... There is a possi... I'm just throwing different ideas that there could be some possibilities with that to store some of that so you still have that space. So I...
My opinion is we're trying to build this station for, you know, the next 50-plus years or whatever, you know? We're cutting stuff out of it, making things smaller. Will it, yes, meet our immediate needs? It will. But I don't think it's very good planning. The amounts we're trying to save, I just don't... From the numbers I'm seeing and the tax impacts that I'm seeing to... I just... You're going to spend, you know, down the road, you're going to end up spending more money in the future to come up with that kind of stuff. I mean, this drawing right here has shrunk our meeting room down. This got rid of... Got rid of a bunch of showers. Now there's only one shower in it. It got rid of, you know, some other, you know, storage stuff and things like that to try and cut out $200,000, which, you know, does not make sense. In a project this size, it does not make sense to cut that kind of, you know, for that little bit out.
But it's 2... It's $1.2 million that we're cutting out, not 200,000.
No, we're not cutting out your 1 point. This... From what we had to this was not cutting out 1.2 million.
Then why are the numbers not making sense to me? So why was it 4 million?
Because that $4 million mark that you're basing on was probably something that never was... Was all of this other stuff...
Then why did we go back to the drawing board if 4.1 was never in the picture? I'm not trying to be angry, but I'm just trying to understand. I'm not on board with 4.1. So you guys went back to the "I'm on board with 2.9."
You got to come up...
So it went from...
You got to come up to the microphone.
I'm just confused.
Yep, so if he... When that's... When you saw that $4.1 million number, that $4 million number, in that letter that he had sent to the city, it said in there 3.5 to possibly 4 as a high ceiling on that. And that included a lot of this stuff that, in my opinion, we don't need to add in there and stuff like that. And I think there's some other stuff we can maybe, you know, some FFNE stuff. There's some different things like that that can be added in the future with very little, you know, cost savings. But to shrink down the square footage, I think, is wrong. You're...
I... Well, at the last meeting... I'm just really confused. With the bay and the room and the separation of the showers for male and female...
What was that number?
EMTs, right? It was 3.3. Okay, so now we get rid of one bay, the ability for your female people to take a shower, and some much-needed storage space. And now it's 2.5. So what's the difference there?
No, you're comparing 3.3 to 2.0. It's basically 3 million.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. 2.9. I'm looking on the wrong line.
Correct, yep.
3.3 to 2.9. And we lost all of that.
It's $340,000 more to go with previous...
So it isn't even like 500? Well, but some things have to be added further on down this list.
We were told that without the FFE, it would be 3.15. With the FFE, we're looking at closer to 4.1 million.
No, no, no.
That's what I thought we were told last time.
The FFNE is in here, in this... In both of these.
So your FFNE is 143,000 in all scenarios?
And after the committee met the last time, they kind of went through that FFNE line by line. And most of it is things that they can do fundraisers for, use what they currently have, maybe utilize some of the donation fund that they've got going. But it was a big number that was thrown in there that they reduced significantly. I can see where you're getting the difference because this one was 2.8, and now we're at 2.5, which is approximately the 200...
Well, one...
Whatever.
One...
And then this was the stuff we were taking out. So the total thing was 3.7 the last meeting.
If you were to... If you were to add everything on the bottom...
If you were to add all of those things, it was 3.7.
Yeah, let me...
The 4.1 was just an estimate. This is what was kind of more of the thing.
This was a more refined...
We came back and said, well, actually, we're... We feel better at 2.5 to 3 instead of being on the higher end of 3. So you came back...
Yeah.
With this. So now we're at 2.9, but we're eliminating the shower, a bay, the day room...
The mezzanine.
And making it smaller.
So I just want to jump into here real quick, okay? This is total construction cost, okay? And then this 423 here is design, FFNE and contingency. So this plus this equals total budget. So that... Just want to clarify, everyone understands that. This is total budget. Then you add or deduct these items to this number. That's how the spreadsheet works.
That's where some of the... I mean, to your point, okay, that's where some of the confusion has come into where we started 3.2, then we heard numbers of 4.1, and then it's back now. I mean, we've...
Yep, and then so last...
That's where the...
Yep. Yep, and last time, Mike, the budget last time was this total budget was 3.3. Total construction was 2.85. So...
I'm fine with a construction cost of 2.5 million. My intent was never to cut out a bay. I think that's wrong. My intent was to still cut out a bay but move some of it. And I think I was pretty clear with Maggie when... And I think she sent over what I asked her to. I kind of drew up how I wanted to move the boat and move a bay but change some of the stuff inside to still accommodate that bay. I don't think we should be cutting a bay out. Now, the other two, you know, the two then maybe that we don't need, that can be discussed. So, and you probably don't have my drawing.
Yeah, I may have made an error because I did send over what we had discussed, but maybe I just... When the new drawing came over, I must have overlooked it.
Some of that, cutting out the day room, I agree with that. I'm still, you know, cutting out the office. I think we can do some of that. But I still don't even think cutting out showers is the right thing either. Those are big safety. Those are what we wanted and need. That's...
And that's where my struggle is is because the information with the current fire department that we have, it's all about space. And when I see that we're cutting... Shrinking the footprint, we're cutting bays out, now my mind's going back to, do you have enough room in between fire trucks? Do you have enough room? And I don't want to end up in the same problem that we have currently by being not compliant with it.
Within the next five years, 10 years.
Right. So I think it's more about...
I think what this is tonight is... Was to give another vision for what it could be. So we do have... We're not... I don't think the, like... Since we haven't made a final decision yet, I think, again, the old station or the older concept plan is still on the table. This new concept plan gives an idea of what it could look like if we did shrink the footprint. And it was to kind of give a... Give an idea of what a... Around a $3 million project could look like.
Get options.
Right.
Have them come with a couple different options that we can, you know, take a look at and do. And I think they've done some of that. I think they've done that. I don't have my drawings now. I still... The way I wanted to move it, I wanted to move that boat bay over and eliminate some of the stuff inside to make room for that bay and keep that bay, then would have those two empty ones and then see what it would cost to cut those two out, like you did. That's what I wanted.
I've never seen that.
That's how I wanted to see it. And that's what was supposed to be relayed over. If it did or didn't, that's, I mean...
This looks like an original.
Yeah, I think it was...
This would have been last meeting's drawing.
I don't have... This was the original drawing?
Yeah.
So this is where you had the whole city?
Yeah, so I did say to give us an option about the host tower.
And move everything and, you know... So these two could be cut out and then get a price for moving this wall over. That was my intention. That's what I wanted to see.
You're still down to eight bays, though, if you would do that.
Well, we're adding one. We would have been adding one.
But then taking two off.
And then eliminating the two extras then, those would be the two that would be considered empty at this point.
Right there, you got nine bays, you were trying to, down below where the, kind of gear grid, storage areas, try and create a bay right there, correct, by shrinking some of that stuff.
Yeah, you're right, how come that math doesn't add up?
Now you're down to.
Yeah, we, we essentially kind of.
Wait, no, you got nine here, you got nine here, but we only need eight, because this was empty. Right?
Yep.
Yeah, this one was empty.
That's what we got, is down to eight bays.
Yep.
Maybe you want to flip back to the new one quick, Maggie?
Well, that, that's what I wanted to see, and now that I see moving that and, and changing that only saves 200,000 dollars, I don't necessarily think that's right.
Zoom, zoom out a little bit, Maggie?
Yep, I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then, and then giving the option of the host tower was another.
So essentially, that's kind of what looks like what we did, Mike.
Yep, okay.
So we shrunk, you know, we got rid of the one and shrunk everything together.
Shrink this stuff.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Not these.
Nope, nope, the bays are the same.
They're the same, yep, yep.
So then in addition.
Made another 200,000 if we did knock this wall down and not have these extra ones.
And you'd be down to.
Correct.
No, I.
Oh, that's already there, that, yeah, that we can't do.
Yeah.
No, 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 no.
I, I'm, I like the 2.9 with, with this layout.
Is that the new?
That would be this layout she's talking about, yep, mm-hmm.
And that, those respond to your initial request, Mike, of trying to get the actual construction to about 2.5. Yep, yep, right, yep. That does do that.
Now, does that include like the, that doesn't, does that include the FFNE, right? And it, does it include like that, the kitchen cabinets and the roofing, all those other things that we could take on and off?
Again, again, if you want to go back to the budget, Maggie, I can.
I just want to make sure I understand.
Mm-hmm.
And I apologize, I was just, we're at 4.1.
Yep, oh, that's fine.
And then we came here and I was, I liked this.
So these on the bottom in the yellow.
So again.
Those are still needed to be added or, or deducted from.
Again, these, these two numbers, that's construction, that's design FFNE and a contingency. Those two equal a total budget. So then you take, that's your base point and you either add in or deduct out, which, you know, I've already heard that the, deducting the two bays is not an option, that would be a deduction of 200,000. So just see.
He said, we want kitchen cabinets, we'll add approximately 10,000 to the 2.9.
Yep, put a check there and 10,000, you add 10,000 to that.
Okay.
So the other thing that we probably need to think about is, and I printed it off, but I was late, so I didn't grab it, is the tax impact and on the difference between the, you know, 3.3 to the 2.9 or whatever we decided to go. We, I mean, obviously, some of these additions probably should be added, no matter which plan we have. But I, I honestly, I just did not have time to look at it today, so I don't know if Jerry did or not, he was asking for it. I can't even see it on my phone.
The difference, uh, yeah, the impact. He's speaking for the future. A 300,000 dollar home.
Jerry, you gotta come to the, oh, do you have the microphone? There you go.
I got you.
Thank you.
Talk was for the future, what, what are we doing for the future? I'm looking at this right, and Todd can correct me, but on a 300,000, 300,000 dollar home, this is on a 3 point, well, let's say 3.1 million dollar bond. 3 million 80,000, 3.1 million 80 dollar bond. The impact, tax impact for a 300,000 dollar home is $95 a year. 26 cents, 26 cents a day.
For 3 million dollar?
For 3.1 million.
For the three.
Three.
Okay, so then go up.
New one.
What's your, what's the next breakdown up?
Well.
3.5.
3.5?
Yep. And that's another 10 bucks.
Another 10?
Another 10 bucks, okay, I didn't get that far, okay.
And four, and that's another 10 bucks.
So for every 500,000 dollars, we have to spend, on a 300,000 dollar home, we have to spend.
10 dollars more.
10 dollars more, right?
And then, and then that's if we go, so if we go the USDA route, you know, because we've got this flexible rate, we can go market rates, bonds. Yep. We can go market rates, bonds are shorter, rates are super cheap right now in the market. And that's where the tax, tax impacts come. So if we go USDA though, it, there's, there's no impact, we go up to 4 million bucks and there's no impact.
When you say no impact, what does that mean?
There's no impact, because remember, we've got those two bonds dropping off at those certain times, right? So we have 195,000 bucks to kind of play with, right? So, thank you, so, so by, the USDA is a 40-year loan, right? So that just brings that more affordable. I mean, to pay more interest in the long run, but you, but your annual impact is zero. So if we go to the market rate bond, that's, what do I have that at, 20 years, I think they are, that's 20 years. So, so there's, that's where the impact comes, if we go sell it in the market at 20 years as opposed to placing it with USDA. Because by the time we place it with the USDA, these bonds have dropped off because we've got an interim construction loan ahead of it. It's sort of on autopilot, so to speak, it's sort of paying for itself. You know, like you build a house, what, you take a little temporary loan out and then, you know, maybe you go ahead and do the big one later, right? And that's kind of what that is. So, yeah, you can go all the way to the 4 million figure with USDA and it's what our calculation shows zero if, if that's. Or, so we, so what we did was, we, we did worst case scenario, like in the plan and for the hearings and for the open houses and for the brochures would be worst case scenario, which isn't really that bad, is going out to the market and selling a 20-year bond as opposed to going with, you know, the federal government and do a 40-year loan, so.
Because my biggest concern is this debt ratio. Because this is, I had heard through, I think Maggie had mentioned something in an email, just about a debt ratio and you can have only so much debt.
Yeah, we talked about that before at a couple of meetings.
Yep.
There's.
Well, I was just wanting to make sure because I'm not a fine.
That information was in our, we just voted on the public hearing.
Yes, so I just.
We should be good there, right?
Right, to make sure, because I want to make, you know, because there's things that come up.
That, yeah, yeah, and that's not to say that you're, you've got too much debt out there, that's really not the indicator for that. It's that state law says that you can't go any farther with that, you got to go find some other, other authority to issue a, a bond a different way, basically, right? Because, because a municipality, you know, county, schools, townships, cities, can't just go and take out a loan like we can a commercial loan. They have to follow state law, so that's why we did the CAP proceeding here, you know, hearing. We picked that particular option for authorization, right? Not the loan yet, not the bonds yet. That just gives us the ability to, to go and, you know, issue a bond if we, if we need to, right? So, so a lot of, a lot of those indicators that we see that limit us, us being the city, to issue a certain bond is, is just basically the legislature said that that's sort of it. We need a benchmark, right, right? So if we don't call for an election, right, have, have the folks vote on this, we have to, we sort of have to limit our, we have to limit cities and counties and schools somehow, right? So to kind of be within a certain parameter, and that's kind of what, what we're talking about, doesn't mean you're over too much, you're, you know.
But we would be able to, if some, you know, because we've got a lot of road projects coming up. So I, I was looking at it as a total city picture.
Yep.
Because, yes, all our money's in different buckets.
Yep.
But it's all under one umbrella.
Yep.
It's like when you're looking at your house, your finances, you, you bring in this much money, I can only afford this big of a house or this much of a house. And just, I don't want to put all our eggs into this project and then down the road, something happens and we got to add another water treatment plant or, you know, and there's another big project.
That probably will happen.
Future city councils are going to come through and they're like, well, we don't have any flexibility because.
Well, there has been.
All the money is tied up under the fire station that we're still paying on.
Yep, yep.
That's what I want to make sure that we have flexibility to still do other projects than just the fire station and making sure we make the right decision on what that final cost is going to be.
So, so the, and that goes through what we talked about with financial management planning, and I think Abdo has helped you with some of that. We would have loved to help you with that, to get the Eller's take on it, but you went with Abdo, so that's kind of been mapped out. I guess my sort of take on that is that with this project, we've, we've used up, we will have used up our wraparound ability, right, to do this, like I talked about, two bonds dropping off and then this one will come in. So I think anything after this will just sort of add on now, right? There's only so much we can do and I think we're doing it here on this one. So if we issue, you know, the equipment certificates, if we do a street project with some tax levy, anything outside of utility revenue, right, that doesn't, doesn't have a tax impact, I think at this point, after we issue this and this happens, then everything just sort of adds on over and above that. There's nothing else we can do. You don't have other things that are dropping off, we're, we're done for a while, I think, right?
Yeah, so I know, I, I think the concern is, is that we're looking to finance those street projects. And I know when you looked at, when we were looking at the CAP and the, and the street reconstruction plan, we, if we issued both of them, the, so if we did the CAP at 4.2 and then we did the, this SRP, then we were going over and we would have to go alternative methods in order to kind of do the, the street, right?
Yeah, you can't do the streets with the CAP method anyway, so you go with a street reconstruction plan. So if you special assess for some of the streets, that takes pressure off your levy. If you charge utility revenues for maybe the sewer and water that's underneath, that takes the pressure off the levy. So that, those are some of the things that, that you can do. And I think, Maggie, you guys have a, thinking back, do you have a ongoing street levy that's sort of building up a street fund?
Yeah, we, we do.
Yep, so then we.
We have a certain amount going in each year.
Yep.
And we're also having to.
Maintenance.
The bond, to do the milling over maintenance.
Yep, yep.
So.
So, so another technique that you can do is, depending on where that's at, right, is we can use part of that, that levy for a debt levy. We can just switch it over, you know, and that will take the impact off too. So it's nice that you have that in place, so you could just convert it over like that. And then, while keeping some in the reserve for the maintenance items, that you can't bond for maintenance, you know? So, so you do need to keep kind of a little reserve there, right, for ongoing maintenance. But you could, and many cities do, is they just take that levy that's going in there to build up that maintenance fund and then you just sort of apply it toward, towards a bond payment. And then that, right, then that takes care of some of that. Yep, but I think in a, planning for the street projects, as much as you can special assess, you try to do that, you know, for special benefit within your assessment policy. And then many cities, these projects are getting so expensive now, many cities have gone to charging for the, for the utilities out of the enterprise fund, basically, instead of adding on to the levy. Back in the day, it was special assessments and then a levy and, and you're good. Now, now it's more, you have to get more creative on where you find those revenues to, to keep things off of that, that levy. So that, that helps, that helps with that. Yep, yep.
Okay, yeah, and that, Nikki, was my same concern too.
Yeah.
I understand the tax impact, I know what it's going to cost people, it's more of those sorts of things.
Yeah, I, I think it's very reasonable for.
Other things to be concerned about.
I, I think.
Future councils and other projects.
Right, right, I, I think either way, whether you pick the 3 million, the 3.5, the 4 million, and you just do a 20-year market rate bond, it's going to have an impact. Because not, not enough is dropping off of the old levy. But, but again, then you can go all the way to 4 million if you could do the USDA route because it's, you know, twice as long as far as the term is concerned, so. So that, that's what you, so, yeah, I don't know, picking away at some of the numbers as it gets you, it relieves the tax pressure a little bit, but I don't, it's never going to eliminate it.
Did we already surpass, like, I thought we voted not to do the USDA, or is that, that's still on the table?
It's on the table, it just hasn't, it hasn't, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Yeah, we're not to that point at all. We're not to that point.
There's so many little parts, so.
But we know it's available and we just have to apply for it and it should, it should be fine, you know? Can't guarantee it, right, we're applying to the federal government, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Well, that helps, and again, my, my intent isn't to, I understand, Andy, what you're saying and if we cut things out and some bays out and it meets our needs today, but that's just some of that, you got to weigh things out. And if that's the way to go, to make sure it gets done, and maybe in 10 years and the beauty of these buildings that we can add on and add two more bays on in 15 years, that, I, but now when I see it's 200,000 is really all it's say, I, then, now I'm not sure if that's worth it, you know? From that, it's about, that's why I want to see it, we want to see those options. You know, that was the intent of it, but.
And is that going to be situated on the property where maybe in 15 years, we can still add on another two bays? Okay.
Yeah, the way it's set up, the way it's set up.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Just three, three quick comments. First of all, echoing Andy's thing about the future, you can cut the bay off now or two of these off now, it's going to cost probably two or three times as much in the future to put them on. Okay, so that's, that's a given. At the open houses where I was at, one of the prices out there on the boards has a tax, tax impact of 157,000, 150 dollars, something like that per year for, I think, a 250,000 dollar house. And I know one person saw that and said, oh, that's not much. He was perfectly fine with it. Here we've got a tax impact of 110 dollars in a 300,000 dollar house. So it's a big difference there. And then keep in mind also, you're going to have a building here that has some decent to significant value in it that's going to be empty. You can sell it, we use it for some other city work, which you don't have to spend, spend money on because it's going to be there ready for your use. So the 3.5 million is a bargain.
Say that last thing? Okay. So we got to get direction, we got to come with some number, I mean, we got to let them move, move on and move forward on things. And it's coming to a decision on how much is, you know, we can take it by construction cost, we can take it by total project on how we want to lay things on and what we want to do. I, I, again, I understand what Jerry's saying of building out, but sometimes we just have to sacrifice some of that now to keep the price where we need it now. And again, it's, I'm not so hung up on the tax impact to an individual homeowner, it's overall that debt ratio, it's other projects, it's other things we need to do down the road. That's my biggest concern. Like I said last week, we, we work, have worked hard to get out of this hole we've been in and to put future councils right back into a financial, it isn't the right thing, that, that's not the right thing to do either.
I'm, I like the, I, I like this new layout, I, I would not get rid of any of those bays on the new drawing. I, I would keep, for me personally, I like this, I like that number with some flexibility to add in some of those additional things that we think are important. So I'm not in favor of getting rid of a hose tower and these two bays.
Maggie, can you go back to the, one of the drawing with the bays in them?
Oh, wrong way, sorry.
One of them that had the nine.
So long after this, it's the original one, I think. Yep.
Yeah, there it is. And like, like I said, and, and what I wanted to see was one added in here. So we have 10. Move some of this stuff, take some things out, take out the day, whatever we need to do. I want to see another one added here and then be able to take these two out.
That's, that's what we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I want to see. Yep, that's, that's what I was hoping to see, yep.
And that's the drawing that we put out there.
Yep. Right, so I don't need, I mean, so taking those other two out, that, we can't do that, I mean.
No, 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 no.
That's just, we can't do it.
That's dumb. It's like.
Right, yep, yep, the intent isn't to go backwards, but.
So my suggestion, I mean, let's find out, what number is it that you're comfortable, that everybody's kind of comfortable with? You know, if we could decide on a kind of a number, let's, let's, let's try and get here. You know, leave it to the building committee to then, all right, here's the number we know we need to fit into, let's see what we can and can't get for that number. You know, I think the building committee is going to be the one that's going to know best of what we need, what we don't need and stuff like that. We've never gotten that direction from you, here's that kind of number, right? That, you know, and there can, and so then we can look into ways that, all right, here's some, you know, some FFNE stuff or here's some other stuff that we can take out, we can fundraise for, we can, you know, fill in, but, you know, to get it. But I want a number that.
Certainly think that's the intent, I agree with that.
That we have, that, and.
I'm plenty good with 2.5 million construction costs.
Okay, and so, but then you said that, but you don't like having to cut out that extra bay and those showers, which we can't do at that cost.
Yeah, so then what? So what else go, what can go, do we need three offices? We don't work down, I mean. And, but those are, I mean, that's, I mean, those are the things I don't, I mean, that's what we need to see, you know, how we, what we need to see. I don't think we should be cutting out the safety aspects of showers, I think they're important.
To, to get that, I mean, we've got to, we've got to gain some square footage back to be able to get some of those things that, you know.
How many showers?
So this one only has one shower.
Correct.
The new one has only one shower.
For 30 people.
Yep.
Men and women.
Yep.
Well, I'm not real, I'm not willing to go up to here for a shower.
I wouldn't get hung up on, on, you know, just missing one shower, I mean, like we said.
I wouldn't get hung up on, on, you know, just missing one shower. I mean, like we said, the plan is not perfectly set, but it's, it's, it was a snapshot of what we can do, what we can get it down to. Doesn't mean we can't maneuver a few things to maybe get another shower and do things like that. Again, we're, we're kind of shooting for a, a little bitty dot on the wall, you know, right now, and we're trying to get the closest we can to that dot, you know, without having a lot of information. So, you know, this is, this is as accurate as we can get at this point, but just keep that in mind.
And there's-
For example, if we flip the restroom-
Whoops, there goes my stuff.
If we flip the restroom designs, we could actually put a shower here and a shower here.
I mean, I can add two showers into this thing just like that. It's only three foot by three foot of space. So Tom's right, we shouldn't be trying to criticize the, the piece. I think the most important thing we can walk away with tonight is direction and approval to move forward with this for a set, whatever that is. If it's, you know, you said, Mike, you know, if it's 2.5 million or 2.7 million for construction, that includes some, some of those items on the list, then, then that's what we need to move forward. And if the goal is to try to add a couple more showers back in, we can make that happen. We just need a commitment.
Do you need like a range?
No.
Like just a high, like?
Give me a target. Give me a dartboard to throw the dart at, cause I got nothing right now but a big black, or blank door, right? So if you can do that, that's what we really need. Yep, and then we can move forward. And as I started when we were first talking, and, and again, our goal is to educate you guys with what the possibilities are and give you options. And we, we heard you loud and clear, and we're, we're trying to do that to the best of our ability. Now I think we just need you to trust us to take you to that target, and put together the plans, work with the building committee, and get it out for bid. We can't wait two more weeks for this, or we're gonna miss it, so.
Understood.
Yep, okay.
We owe that to you guys, definitely.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's-
And I appreciate what you guys have done.
Yeah, this is-
Exactly what we've asked for, so I appreciate that.
Good.
I know you guys worked hard on it, so. Like I said, I'm at 2.5 for construction cost. I'm comfortable with that number.
So, at that, I mean, I just wanna look at some of the stuff that's on that, on that list there. You say 2.5, which we're out there, which, what we're showing. I just think there's some stuff on that list that we probably-
What would you say like would be your top three of that list? Not the bays, but like the-
But again, I think that's up to the, the committee.
The committee?
One thing is gonna be-
I think we should just give them out a number.
The mezzanine down there, right now, that's our biggest problem. We don't have storage. We've got, in this, right now, there's a one little room for storage.
To me, that's-
I think we can't have enough storage. That, putting that mezzanine in after the fact is gonna cost a lot more than 46,000, or $47,000.
What are all those things together?
They've identified several of them as, as being able to do independently, like the generator, the flagpole.
And the sprinkler system is not necessarily needed.
We'll, we'll actually be receiving bids on all of these, these units here, so. The vehicle exhaust system, we'll get it on the generator, and we'll get it on the, the-
Oh, so you'll say, what is it with this?
Well, we'll actually know what the bid amount is. We'll receive the bid that way. It'll be listed on the form as, you're gonna pay an additional, and their number might be 50 grand. Oh, okay, so it's 50,000 for the additional storage. Now we come back and we say, do we wanna do that? Wow, bids came in great, or eh, you know, the bids were right where we thought they were, we're probably not comfortable with it. Here we are. We just need direction on whether you're gonna allow us to move forward.
And when we get the bids, we can, if bids are way, way lower than we want.
Guys, this is no different than talking to a bank for a loan, saying, I can afford this much of a house. What can you put in it?
Yeah, exactly.
And so all we need to do is tell them, this is how much we can afford. So are we looking at 2.5? Are we looking at 3.1? Everything else, let's leave it up to the building committee.
And I'm good with that.
We don't need to discuss that in here.
I'm good with that.
So do we need a, would, would you do, do you just do the construction cost, or?
That's what we're asking for right now. Or do you want your total all in?
Or do you include the total project budget? I don't know what you would do. But that project budget would, is dependent on what the construction cost is, right?
Right, because-
Besides the FFNE.
Percentages and everything else.
There's also, there's also a contingency fund here of $76,000.
And that'll change.
If, if the, if the project goes, and we don't have any challenges with, you know, supplier not offering the product we specified, because a month later, they no longer make it, by the way, that stuff's happening. This contingency money could possibly, a portion could still be available. It, it doesn't get spent if it's not needed. Let's go right back to you.
It's giving them a target to go after.
Yeah.
And we're well aware of, every job we've ever bid has never come in higher. It's always come lower, which then frees up to add some of this back in if we need to, you know, if we want to keep it at a certain number.
My comfort zone for the total construction cost is three.
Is, is, for construction is three?
Yep, that's my comfort.
You're three up here, or you're about three, five here then? Copy, okay? How about you, Nikki?
Uh, I'm right around there. I could go up to like three, 3.1, but.
So yours again, Liz? Three up there, and I wasn't looking at the construction cost?
No, that's like total project, 3 million. Yeah, so I would be very comfortable with that.
This number?
Mm-hmm.
But Liz is saying she's comfortable with close to three here.
Yes. Three, three for the construction cost is what I am comfortable with.
Which would probably put you about 3.5, yeah.
And I, you'd said that you're-
I'm comfortable with 2.5.
You're comfortable with 2.5, how about you, Tice?
I'm the three. I'm of the mindset that we should probably try to bid it with the future in mind, and all the problems that we just discussed today eliminated, and then if we need to, we can take away.
And a $10 differences between 2.5 to three, to 3.5.
So-
And that being said, I also needed explained probably a little bit more, like with the numbers in front of me, what our, what our future possibly looks like financially, with all of our products or projects coming in. Like, I wanna be a little bit more comfortable with that before I'm like, yeah, let's-
Well, and I think the 3 million is higher than what we did, we talked two weeks ago, so you know, for construction costs, okay.
And the, like our current long-term plan that we put together in February.
Yeah.
And it gives you that idea.
I'm fine with the two. I'm fine with what we had last time.
Yeah, so Nikki, what you're saying is that, that with this being authorized at three, it was actually higher. Last time was 2.8, or something like that. So, right, what you're really saying is Liz is, is on board with last week's, or last month's plan and budget. Nikki, you're seeing the same?
Oh, well, I mean, I, I want to be around, like, this would be on the high end of my number.
All right, does that give you direction? Do you need more? Do we need a motion?
I would do a motion.
Can we, can we meet in the middle?
I'll, someone can make a motion on what they would like to see the construction cost be at, to give direction to the committee.
So you want it for just the total construction costs, or the total project budget?
Let's go construction cost for now. Cause the other stuff, we can play around with FFE and stuff. I would, I would just go construction cost if that works for you, unless you guys-
Doesn't matter us, we just, we'll use whatever-
Right, yep.
Number you want.
So I would make a motion that we approve the committee to pursue the plan for total construction costs not to exceed 3 mil.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
And that would also, that would be like the end-all, be-all total construction cost, which would include some of those things in the yellows.
Whatever is needed down here not to exceed and put in discussion and support.
Yep, okay.
This doesn't give us the opportunity to just go back and pack, pack all this in there. We still report to you what, what-
What we would need out of there.
The direction that gives you.
Knowing that we can also downsize, if this thing comes in, and we're not comfortable with the way we're sitting financially, or.
You'll have a certain amount of flexibility with the alternates.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any further discussion?
I was just, I mean, I, I wasn't really comfortable at 2.8. I'm more comfortable, I know it's just a couple hundred thousand, but then you add in the extras, then, you know, it just pushes. I'm not comfortable at a total at a 3.5, so.
All right, any more discussion?
So the extras down there are part of that 3 mil?
That's what we're proposing, yes.
They have to figure out how to get what they want, and all of that of there. With everything that they, everything that we can get.
Side in the yellow.
The building committee has already identified things that they want out there that they think they need.
I would, I would go into it to thinking that, you know, the, from what I'm hearing too, they're, they might remove some from the FFNE, and then the-
That's a different line, I don't know.
No, I know, I know. So I, I think when you see the total construction cost, you automatically are, I think some people, some, I'm just vision, or watching, people are thinking it'll jump to 3.5. But we're, they're also gonna, I, I also don't think that, you know, they, I don't think they're gonna add everything in that bottom two, so I don't think they're gonna go up to that three. Well, I, I think you have to assume that-
It's, it's a goal though. I mean, it's just a, it's a target.
Gives them something to work with.
The council ultimately has the final decision, so remember that too, that if it comes back and, you know, we're not comfortable, we can just go from there. We have to start somewhere.
Kids are gonna come back. The kids, kids will come back fairly. I mean, just looking for that kind of ceiling that you're at.
So if we go 3 million and you do those contingencies, even take out the FFE, you're still close to adding another 400,000, so then you're closer to 3.5. And I just, that's where I, I know it's only a couple hundred thousand, but it is a couple hundred thousand. So I'm just, I was just really comfortable at a 3.1, 3.2, where we originally kind of started. So that's why I'm struggling with a 3,000, 3 million, when this one was at 2.8.
That FFNE line is gonna go down too. Not what you wanna see, like the 200,000, but I think they figured the FFNE line could go down at least 100,000, wasn't it?
That FFNE, FFNE is-
Well, that's always been the same.
FFNE is the, is the gear extractor for washing gear, gear, gear after, that's all the equipment that they, that they need.
Well, we did go through it line by line.
Oh, you were able to cut some, okay, I wasn't at that meeting. Yeah, cutting off 40 of them.
Cutting 40.
We're holding off on some of it until they raise money.
Funding in other ways.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I just don't, I just don't want it to fail over, like, meet in the middle. But whatever, we can just go.
All right, any more discussion on it? All right, we have a motion and a second to have the total construction cost not exceed $3 million. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Motion fails 2-2.
I'll reentertain the motion to make the construction cost 2.8.
Million for construction cost, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Motion a second to have the total construction cost not exceed 2.8 million. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Aye. Motion carries 3-1. Perfect, there you go. 2.8, yeah, thank you guys. Again, thanks for everything you guys have done, the entire committee. You guys, I know this is tedious, it's been challenging, but I think this gives good direction.
So along that lines, is it worth it to entertain kind of those brainstorming sessions that we used to have with council and the park board? Are you guys interested in anything like that? Because at these meetings that they are having, a lot of good points and, and ideas come up. And I wish that people could hear this on a more, like, not official kind of, formal setting.
I'm certainly in favor of attending any meetings. You want me to attend, I'll attend. But that was kind of the idea of you being the liaison, that you're the conduit to bring this back to us.
I get it, but-
But if you guys want to meet, and that's what the committee wants, I'm available anytime, and will be available.
Maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to just have one good brainstorming, once we've kind of moved forward, and we're, you know, after you guys have come up with your thoughts. I don't know, I don't know if you do it before the bidding process, or after, or.
Sasan?
All right, so what we need to do now in order to meet our schedule that, that's been proposed, is we need to move aggressively through design, not, not sit and spin in it. So this guidance you've given us today is perfect. I think what needs to happen now is we need to meet with the building committee, and hash through some last-minute things, do some math, get a proposed plan that meets this expectation of this 2.8 million construction, and doesn't, doesn't force it hard, but, but has, we have discussions about the value of the items that we're adding. We bring that back to you for review, and we move forward. I've got engineers that need to get in on these projects and get this stuff designed, so we can get the plans prepared, so we can hit this next wave. And we only have about two months to do that. So yeah, great. Thank you so much, council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here you go, Ron. Thank you.
All right, Maggie will take us.
Oh, shoot.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
I don't think so.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
We just need to make a motion on these though, right?
Yep. So the first one is just certification of CARES Act expenditures, what we've currently spent. And that would be through Resolution 8.10, 20, 30, and then just review of potential expenditures. So current expenditures have been just additional cleaning. We've had to do additional cleaning services, hand sanitizer at City Hall and Community Center, just some, some additional signage, social distancing. A lot of that, a lot of that social distancing signage is for elections, and then some face masks for staff, council, commission, and volunteers. So we did receive from the CARES Act Fund, from the state of Minnesota, $172,906. And we do have to, we do have to follow specific guidance on expenditures. That is included in your packet, and we have been following that. We just have to keep track of what we're spending money on, and we do need to have an explanation of how it fits in with COVID-19. So to date, in your packet is just what we've spent from March 1st to August 5th. So I'm just keeping track and having you approve every mon, every, about every month, what we've spent to date, just to keep track of it. So we spent about $2,617, $2,617.51, ranging from attorney consultation on COVID-19, extra cleaning services, masks, and disinfectant. So that first resolution that I mentioned would, would approve those items.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yep.
When did we upgrade all the tyranny stuff? Was that before?
Yes, it was, yep.
Now that's spend a day, does that include any revenue loss for the community center?
Oh, that's a good point. No, it doesn't. No, so we can get that, I'm glad you brought that up, cause I'm trying to think outside the box about things that we can spend it on. So that would be one. And then another potential expenditure, some items that we're thinking about is updating audio visual again. And that would be to allow us to do real-time streaming through our YouTube channel, and then it would also allow, like, residents to connect in at the same time, and so they can watch the meeting live. We, so that would, that's something that I'm proposing. And then just some other items would be extra cleaning services through November, with, attached with Public Works, wastewater treatment plant, steam washer, and then possibly some automatic bathroom fixtures. But we're just throwing those out. We're open to, and we're looking for other ideas, or to even take things off if you don't see them as fit. And then we're also proposing, coming up in the, in the packet, would be some working with the Carver County CDA on some of their- Working with the Carver County CDA on some of their programs. So on page 63, there's kind of a breakdown, what we spent to date, what we proposed in the packet for other items, and then CDA programs at 100,000. And then just kind of the remaining for us to think about. So.
Should we do them piece by?
Yeah, we would do it separately. So the resolution would be just for what we spent to date. So that's the.
That number may change now if you add revenues in? Or do we, is it?
No, that's just covering everything from March to this amount, this 2,617.51.
But not including the revenues lost?
It doesn't, but I guess what we could do is we could either add it on the next one, or we can table that resolution and just add, and we can do a new resolution at the next meeting. That's fine. But no, I think that.
We can, we can approve this one at 26, 17.51, and then you can bring another resolution.
That would totally change.
All our numbers are off.
Two and three.
Then our numbers are all off.
It's almost like we have to table all of them.
Is one we can.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. So.
This almost all has to get pushed to next meeting.
The, just this resolution would have to get.
We need to keep moving forward with the other ones, so we can.
Yep.
Carver County.
The other two we can move forward with. This one we can wait. It's just more of a tracking.
We don't know this number, we don't know what the other numbers are. We don't know what we're bringing to Carver County, or, I guess it'll.
That's what I'm saying.
I guess we can reduce ours, our future stuff. So we're setting aside stuff for future, which was. Proposed expenditures, 32,300. I suppose that would impact that one.
Well, we have a remaining balance of 37,988.
Okay.
So it would just impact that.
Oh, perfect, okay. I'm good with that then.
Yep, so we'll just bring that one back then, table it and.
Just reduce our remaining, and we're only talking $1,000, right?
It's, it's not that much. It's, yeah, probably 15, 200, I mean, 2,000 maybe.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that might just bring this down to 35. Okay.
Right, exactly.
I'm good with that. I'll look for motion to approve resolution. 8.10, 0.20, 0.30, approving the current expenditures of $2,678.51.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 4, 4-0.
And then, we're just looking, staff, we've just been putting together some ideas. Again, our ideas that we've put together amounts to 32,300. And then there's a remaining, a remaining balance of the amount that I just said, the 37,988. So. Are there? Again, we have time. We're just, is there anything else you can think of that?
Go back to Liz, please.
Yep. The one thing that was brought up to me today was maybe. Some, I was talking to Abdo Eikenmeyer, and they said that there could be some, like, off-site laser fiche addition. But I don't know what that cost is yet. They haven't gotten it to me.
Like these bathroom fixtures at 12,000, are those replacing toilets?
Yeah, that would be toilets.
And urinals or just toilets?
It would be, and urinals. And sinks.
And sinks. Okay, I like that idea. How about anything in the kitchen? Anything in the community center in the kitchen?
Oh yeah, the water fountain. That is not included in that, so we would have to add that one.
Tables on there are, so we can social distance, we're having a hard time. Some of these, they can't move, they're heavy, they don't have wheels, so we're gonna get tables that we can get moved around and be able to social distance. I'm fine with the, I'm, I'm, I like the left, I'm good with it.
Okay, so, yep, that's just our.
The leftover is for any additional things we can think of, right?
Right, yeah, we still, we'll have 30.
Did you ask the fire department if they needed anything?
I did. They haven't come back to me with anything yet, so. I can ask them again, but when I talked to Andy, he didn't have anything that he thought, could think of, so.
Could they think outside the box, kinda like what we're doing?
Yeah.
Maybe something for the future? COVID's not going away.
I, I would think that we should revisit the numbers. I mean, do we need to get Carver County their stuff, like, right this second?
We do, because they only have a certain timeframe to use the money and to get it out there to promote.
I mean, and I, I would think that the 39 would, would help if the fire department comes up with anything and anything additional we have.
I would think so too.
And this CDA money would help mayor residents and mayor businesses?
Yes, it would only do, it would only do mayor res, mayor businesses and residents.
And are they letting them know that there's these funds that will be available?
Yeah, do they advertise it?
Yes, so they have, they've put together their materials, and then we're gonna, they're gonna help us put together ours. But they also have a pot of money that's going into it, so you, residents can apply, and I believe the Carver County money is used first, and then. Ours is, like, so we have, it's kind of like a, they're gonna make sure our money is given to our residents and businesses only. But they also have additional funds for this program too, so if they're, for some reason we run out, or if, it's kind of like. If that fund doesn't have any money left, then it'll go to ours. Or if, I, I'll have to ask who's gets used first, or if ours runs out, then the county will have.
We just wanna make sure that people know and businesses know that this money is there.
I think I read it somewhere, that it, they have their plan here.
Yeah, they have their.
They're planning and getting that out too.
Yep, so they've already started promoting it, but we would then, once we get ours approved, we would start promoting it as well.
So then last month, we asked if we gave them money and we need it, can we get it back? No?
Yeah, if they don't use it, they would give it back to us.
If they don't use it.
Yep.
And I think it'll be there. I don't, I don't know if we'll use all 100,000. So if they don't, if it doesn't get used, it'll come back to us, and then we'll have till November to spend, November to spend it?
Otherwise, then it goes.
For approved items.
Right, and then if it doesn't get used, my understanding is that it goes to the county. Goes back to, yeah.
So we are gonna have the opportunity to take money back, cuz $60,000 for the businesses in town seems really high to me, but.
It's like a 10,000.
Really low.
I don't know what.
Yeah, cuz it's a 10,000 grant, like, like the grant is up to 10,000, so.
For business?
For business.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So if they apply for all of it, then it would be.
Is it a, is it a grant, or they have to pay it back?
Oh, it's a, it's a grant. They would not have to pay it back.
They should take.
It'll, it'll mainly be masks, sanitizers.
Yeah.
It can be for businesses, it can be rent, mortgage, utilities, payroll.
Good. All right.
Let's just make sure we advertise once the county, you know, letting our businesses know.
Has the EDA been involved in this at all, Maggie?
They haven't. I can bring it to them. The reason why I didn't, well, and. The, the reason why I've been trying to work more with the Carver County CDA is because there's a lot of auditing that goes with this, and a lot of administration that goes with it. So they would actually take it all on. They would take on the, all the administrative work, getting, gathering the applications, and then they would also administer. But, I can.
I don't wanna have them think we, you know, they were just not.
Yeah, I can.
They should have been involved in this process.
I think that's a good idea. I'll bring it to the EDA, cuz maybe, maybe that extra 37 is something that the EDA can actually do their own fund, grant funding for. I think I've heard Watertown is kinda doing something on their own. But I can definitely bring that to them.
All right. With that, I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 8.10, 0.20, 0.31, partnering with Carver County CDA to provide business grants of $60,000.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 4-0. I'll look for a motion to approve resolution 8.10, 0.20, 0.32, to partner with Carver County CDA to provide residential grants of 40,000. We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 4-0. Public Works, Watertower Rendering.
I don't think we came up with what.
Okay, is, Maggie, are you starting with that, or is Kyle?
I'm gonna let Kyle jump into this one.
Kyle, could you turn on your microphone, please? So yeah, we got four concept plans. These first two are different. This is a lighter silver. I got the book with me. I'm gonna see if we can get some colors, some bigger color slotted samples. So this is Comet, Comet and Sinker. So it would be these two colors right here. Okay, everybody see those? I can mark them if I find a pen. They, the Sinker is the darker color. On the bottom of the bowl. The Comet is the lighter color. Currently, our tower is cloud, which is more of a off-white. So they're really not too far off. We're just going with the gray versus the white, yellow, beige-ish. The next tower concept is a little darker, a little bit more silver. This actually is closer to like our Public Works trucks. I think the logo looks fairly decent on them, so. And then it's a little bit darker. It's actually Deep Space.
Can you hold those up and point those?
And can you pass that around, so I can get a better look at it there?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
So, Deep Space is a little darker. They recommend the coating as well, and they say don't do black. I don't know if it kinda turns light or.
And then the other two are just straight Comet and straight.
Yep, yep, straight Comet and then straight gradation.
Let's first talk, do people like the bowl on it or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody likes the two-tone.
I like the two-tone.
That's what I'm worried about. I don't wanna, you know, paint it and they drop the color.
Cuz I was thinking, on June 22nd, we said we wanted the gray base on the bottom of the bowl with three logos.
Stay with the two logos and not have this.
Just the two, but we're facing them north and south.
I was wondering, when I was driving into town today.
We only see it coming from McConia.
So how many logos is this gonna have on it? Okay, cuz I know we discussed three.
Yep. It'll have two, and then it's gonna face north and south with Highway 25.
And nothing coming from McConia.
Yeah, right now you see the one covered from McConia, and the other one you see from Hennepin.
When you get to it.
There's no leaves on the tree.
When you get to it.
Yep, yep.
I like the dark one. I like the dark one.
That was easy. Thanks, guys. Wow, write that down.
We all agree.
I'm gonna write dark one.
Please make a note of that, Janelle. This council agreed.
If we post a picture of it on Facebook and we get a bunch of dislikes, it falls on you guys.
No, that's fine.
We need a motion, Maggie. Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, let's do it.
I'll look for a motion for the Watertower colors, for the top of bowl to be. Gradation 37 GR, and the bottom of the bowl, Deep Space 37 GR with two logos.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries 4-0.
I'll still see if I can track down some samples.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm excited. What, when would this be in September?
It's gonna be end of, end of August, they're mobilizing here, so we're gonna get on posting about emergency watering ban.
And then make sure the fire department knows not to do hydrants.
They're all are in here. Last time it went really well, except for when they opened up hydrants, so.
City Council reports, Liz, anything to report on?
No, sir.
Nikki?
No, mine was just the fire station meeting.
We did have a public works meeting this morning, or this afternoon. Went over some of the pond stuff that we discussed, the pond policies, what can we do with some of this stuff, if there's any options for some of the smell and, and the pond policy. Some initial early discussions on public works, building expansion, for future expansion, and. What was the third item? Oh, seal coating, so.
Will there be resolution for some of the ponds? Cuz I did walk by one, and it, it smells like an outhouse.
Some of that, we didn't have a lot of resolution right now. They're, they were gonna walk them again. Some of it is just because we've had so little rain now, they're sta, they're not turning. So they're just stagnant. We did find some chemicals that may knock down some of it, but it's like $5,000 a gallon. You need two applications, you have to get out there and spray it on the algae, and all that's gonna do is kill it and drop it to the bottom and fill up the bottom, so. We're still looking. They were gonna walk out and take a look at that one again, and see if there's, maybe there's some compost sites around there. It might not be the algae in the pond. It could be some lawn waste or some other things that are happening.
We just got a lot of rain, right? Like.
Yeah, we just had two inches. So that might have turned it now. Did you guys get a chance to walk out there today?
No, we, we had to leave right away.
Yep, yep. So they'll get that, and then we'll continue to, to look at it, but.
When we get to other business, just let me know.
All right, we're at it.
Okay, so I'm gonna have Joe come up, and it came to our attention today that he's gonna be leaving Carver County Sheriff's Department, so.
So I put in my official notice to Carver County Sheriff's Office. My last day will be the 21st here in town. The sheriff's office has already assigned my replacement. Her name's Ally Jacobson. She worked day shift, so she wasn't able to attend the meeting today, but. We're looking at potentially having her do somewhat of a shadow phase for next week, so I can bring her around and show her how things work around here and get her introduced to everybody, so. Imagine her start date will be the 24th in town here.
Do you wanna say where you're going or not?
Going to the city of Chaska. Their police department.
Good for you. Well, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Again, thank you for all your support and commitment to the community. You'll certainly be missed, but.
You're gonna be a little bit busier too.
A lot busier.
I was gonna say, a lot busier.
New opportunities is good, and I'm sure it's certainly lost to Carver County Sheriff's Department, but you'll still be around in Carver County, so.
Still be around.
Yep, good. No, thank you. Thanks for everything, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Joe.
Think of anything that you need while I'm still here, please.
Yep, absolutely will. Good, best of luck. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, any other items, Maggie? I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? We are adjourned. All right, let's jump right into the workshop, and we'll call that to order and start with the street management plan, please.
Okay, so this is just, oh, I think I just, I only have the agenda up here, sorry. So this was the item that came up at a previous council meeting, so I just wanted to provide you with some documentation that shows kind of our, again, our pavement management plan over the next 15-plus years. That includes mill and overlay, some reconstruction, and then also seal coating. So. Again, these projects total are about 5.6 million. And then, so based on these estimates, we, we are budgeting a little bit, levying a little bit every year, about 100 to. You know, if we can get higher, then we will, but 100,000 is what we've been doing. And then, at our public works meeting today, we talked about how we're gonna start budgeting for seal coating. That's gonna start in 2022. But it's, it's really about how are we gonna finance. I think this year, we were able to pay cash, but then in the future, kind of, how, you know, even though we're levying that 100,000, how are we gonna finance the remainder of those projects? So. And I can bring, so what I brought to you before was the street reconstruction plan. With, with that, it's kinda like the CAP, you'd have to hold a public hearing, and it is subject to reverse referendum, just because it is one of those higher. Be a higher bond allocation amount. be a higher bond allocation amount. But I just wanted to bring it back for discussion. It's not something we have to do right away, but something that we would have to consider in the future if we want to keep on that schedule for our mill and overlay projects and street reconstruction, so.
Bond like the whole amount, or do you just bond as you go?
No, it would be staggered. So, in that schedule, the street reconstruction plan, I think we had a, an amount that we would do in 2020, but I think we'd probably push up to 2021. So, 2021, 2023, and 2025, we'd bond just certain amounts, so we wouldn't have such a big debt obligation at once. So, it'd just kind of be staggered, and I think it was included in that document that I sent you all that kind of showed the debt falling off and then how it replaced itself. So, I just, again, it is kind of on our C, our long-term plan, or it has been on our long-term plan, and then this just kind of is the next step for financing moving forward, so.
I think that's the way to do it. Our street management plan, so we're already one year off. Because we waited, so.
Right.
And what about, when do we start talking about, because the next technically phase would be Fifth Street reconstruction?
Yeah, we would have to...
When will we talk about that? Because we would want to talk about assessment, because it would be a full reconstruction.
Right. That would be something we want to start probably talking about by the end of the year. The financing piece, I believe we can, we would maybe want to get done by the end of the year, but could always wait till the spring, or not spring, but early, early January, February. But, yeah, we have to, as part of the planning process, we would have to start planning which project we would be doing next year, and that would include, if it were Fifth Street, kind of our special assessments plan, because that would be a full reconstruction.
Probably make sure we're aligned on that.
If that's the one we want to go with.
We should probably have those discussions, so we know what to start planning for, but...
Right.
Last I heard was it's in dire need.
Yep. It is.
Yeah, I think we've had a resident even come in and ask when it was gonna get redone, so.
Like she talked a little with the seal coating, and what we talked earlier today is typically two to three years after new pavement goes down is when you first seal coat it to really get the best life out of it, so we do have, starting next year, we'll probably be doing the new roads that went into Hidden Creek and Coldwater Crossing from the additions, and then we'll start getting all these new reconstruction onto that seal coating plan, so they're all getting done about two to three years after they're done. And then probably one more time, their mill and overlay are about a 20-year road, so we'll probably then do another, they'll probably get seal coated twice throughout the lifetime, maybe three, depending on usage. So, that'll be part of it to get the most life out of it.
So glad we did this.
Yep.
All right, anything more on that, Maggie? Do you need, does anyone have any other questions on it, or? I think we should talk before too long. Make sure we're aligned on the next project.
Yep, no, that makes sense.
That's the appropriate one, and it, I think it is, but if someone hasn't been out there lately, I'll give them some time to drive down and check it out, too. All right, police contract.
Yep, so included in your packet is a template, or a, what is it? Pretty new contract. It has a lot of editing, so the sheriff's department did a kind of a full review of their contract and made some changes, so if you have any comments on that, let me know.
Have you ever looked at it?
No, he hasn't. I just wanted to, they just came out with this part. I can send it over to our attorney.
I'm only intent to ask her to get it onto a work session fairly early, because all the conversation lasts here, so I want to at least give us some time to align. You don't need to make decisions, but we want to keep the hours. Do we want to have a, you know, do we even want it or not want it, you know, have some of those conversations, or else we're not going down on the very last meeting to approve it, so. There certainly doesn't have to be a decision today, but we gotta start discussing what kind of we want to start.
I know Joe's gonna be gone. You would, I would like to hear his thoughts on the hours, you know, the hours that we changed it to, like, I mean, I feel like it's working well, but I don't know, because I'm not out there, you know?
Well, I mean, just reading the reports, I mean, he's done a lot more suspicious persons.
Yeah.
Because he's working.
It's tricky. Yeah, it's tricky, you know, and I, yeah, I think, I'm comfortable with the hours and leaving them the same. I think it's been good. The tricky part is we just, with COVID, you just don't know what happens.
Oh, right, true.
You know?
Well, I'm just saying, I like the hours. I like the .88. I liked, I think that, that, you know.
I want to make sure that if we do renew the contract, that we do not have somebody who lives within our city be the deputy in the city. I think no matter how good you are and how professional you are, you, it's, it's just too fine of a line, and I would like to make sure that that gets...
I don't have an opinion either way on that, but Maggie, you'll have to find out if that's even something we can add.
Yeah, I think in the, I think in the contract, we can make suggestions. It says we can make suggestions, or they would work with us.
Ultimately, it'll come down to their decision, but... Or, okay, okay.
I don't know that I would necessarily agree with that. I think we've heard pros and cons for both of that. One of our best ones lived in Mare, and he built relationships.
Who was that?
Chris, our first one, yeah. So, and he worked really hard at building his in-town relationships. I have a huge problem with this going up $33,000.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's not. It's only three, 3,000.
3,000.
3,000.
I still, I, I'm, I... I know we're not at the point of approving or not approving it. I just don't feel like we have gotten our money's worth at all this year.
Yep. Fair.
I'm still seeing graffiti. I'm still seeing issues. I'm still seeing complaints, hearing complaints, people calling me with complaints. I, I look at the reports and I just... I'm not happy with what we've paid out for what we've gotten in return. I agree. We still have, I, I don't know if this even has, if it even prevents anything from happening. We still have people lighting off fireworks that are illegal in people's, on people's property, that they didn't even ask if they could use it, and now this guy's got this burnt, I, it just... And it happens every single weekend, so it can't be that hard to do something about it, you know, but...
It's weighing it out. It's weighing it out. I mean, there's not, I don't think the intent of having him from two to 10 was to have no crime whatsoever. I mean, still, cities with police departments still have crime. I mean, it still happens, but...
Yeah, no, I don't think that's the...
Some of the fireworks stuff, though, that's, I think, the downfall, or the part that worries me. I understand. I get what you're saying. That's a lot of money we're spending. But now, if we don't contract with them, we don't have them from, so if there are fireworks, then they won't come out.
Yes, they will if they're called.
I thought the, I thought some of that stuff...
They only come out for life and death things and felonies.
Then we won't get them for, yeah.
I don't, I don't know about fireworks, but I don't think fireworks are felonies.
So, now is it worth?
I, I...
Is it worth spending 124,000 to be able to have that? How important is it to get fireworks taken care of, or?
Well, that they can say, if you call...
Other things.
In a complaint, I want to say that our tax dollars cover them coming out. It only requires them under state statute. It only requires them to do minimum necessary, which is what they're doing in, like Camden, in the townships. So.
And theft was the weird one, because it has to be over $1,000 value for it to be a felony theft.
I mean, they're still gonna come out for, obviously, half the calls that we are making, right?
Right, yeah, they'll still be out for domestic assault and some of those, you know, all those.
Because those are threats to life. I don't know.
All right, well, let's continue to discuss it.
Is there any, like, information you want me to get before the next, next time we talk about this?
I want to know, I know part of our discussion with our ordinances is that he was going to be enforcing some of the ordinances that we have in place. I would like to know how many he's done in this year and last year. Tickets and stuff like that. Because I know one thing that the sheriff himself said is that, you know, as long as they had all of our ordinances in their computer, then that's something that Joe could do. So, I want to know, because I'm seeing, I mean, if people are getting ticketed, we're not doing anything about it. I mean, stuff's been sitting in the same spot for three years, tags expired and all that stuff, so I'd just like to know.
Anything else?
No, that's all I need, but I agree with that, Liz, and I would like to use this person. I mean, if we're gonna be paying that, I... And I, and I think some of that, I think we've talked about that, and we've talked about our top priorities, which ones that we really want to go ahead, and I don't think we've just ever gotten there to really have them do it.
We have a new person starting, so maybe we can start that out.
Absolutely.
And just have that conversation on what's our, what's important to the council.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, and otherwise, I don't need anything right now, any other information. Tyce, do you need her to ask the sheriff anything? All right, let's go to rental ordinance.
Okay, so at the last meeting, we talked about this. The questions that you wanted me to bring back were the number of rental properties and how other cities manage rental ordinances. So, I talked to the county, and it's not, it's really hard for them to even know what are rental properties, because not everybody registers them. So, I guess, like, the number, like, they couldn't really even give me a number, because it, what I thought was, like, rental properties had to be, like, like, taxed differently, but I guess there's, like, ways around it. So, there's not really a good way to know how many number, or how many rental properties are in the city, so what I'm finding from other cities is that, like, when you do initiate the rental ordinance, it's all about educating and getting the information out there. It's kind of an honor system. And then if you kind of hear from somebody, "Can you check this out?" "I think this is a rental property," they usually send letters and they just educate, like, "Hey, if you're a rental property, let us know. You gotta fill out this paperwork." So, that's kind of how it's done, is just getting that initial information out and telling people and kind of the honor system.
We'll have to do that and get the information out there, and as you start hearing them or seeing things or people are calling it, I mean, you can start keeping a track of addresses.
Yeah, we can get some of them through utility billing. Not everybody tells us they're a rental property, but that gives us a good idea as well.
So, doesn't homesteading your property or not homesteading it with, buy it as a rental?
Well, that's what I thought, but I guess there's ways around it, is what the county said, like, I don't know, so.
Legal or illegal ways around it?
I don't know. It's just...
Yeah, those aren't legal either.
And then if we decide, like, the fee we would have, would, we would, are we requiring inspection? Would we inquire inspection?
Well, that's the thing, too. McConia does inspections every two years, Norwood does three, and Cologne does two every two years. And that would be done by Metro West for us.
And the fee we would charge would cover that?
Yes. So, would there be like a, I'm finding, and I'll look more, more for fees, but I think it's like a inspection fee, and then there's like a per-unit fee. So, we don't really have to worry, we don't really have a lot of properties that have multiple units. I think we only have one property that has four units, so. But, I mean, it's always maybe good, good to have. But I'm, I'm gonna work with Metro West to get an actual good number that would make sense to reimburse.
Metro West do any of those other communities' inspections? They do? Okay, thank you. Good, so they, yeah, I'd like to continue to move forward on this, so.
Yeah, and I included on page, let's see, one of the pages is their checklist that they use.
Fifty-six.
Yep.
And that checklist came from Metro West?
Yep, so they, that's their checklist, but it obviously depends on how in-depth our ordinance goes, if, like... So, depending on, again, how in-depth we go, they would... If our ordinance didn't cover certain things, they would just cross it out or something like that, so. But, yeah, that's just an idea.
All right.
But, yeah, I'll keep, I'll keep working on the pricing and then just, are you thinking every two years or three years with?
I'm comfortable with two.
That's pretty standard. So, I'll work on kind of getting a final draft to you, to you all.
Thank you. All right, side-by-side. I asked Maggie to put this on. I was actually talked to from a person who has a side-by-side with a plow on it, "Street legal," and plows other driveways for extra income, while he can't go out on the street and get to these other driveways to do them, because they're not, they're not, our ordinance doesn't allow them. So, I wanted to bring here and so we can have some discussion on what we want to do, if anything, with that ordinance, to be able to allow street legal side-by-sides to be on city streets.
They are getting a little out of hand, and I am seeing 10-year-old kids driving around with others, eight, nine, 10-year-old kids in these things, going up and down the road. We have no idea what they're doing, and if you look at ATVman.com, he talks about the laws, Minnesota state laws, and for youth riders, classes, I mean, just the whole law thing. I think Minnesota state law is pretty clear, and I think our ordinance follows that law, and I would not want to change that. I feel bad for somebody who wants to make a living with that.
But they should be, so you can ride them on county roads, not in ditches. In Carver County, you cannot ride in ditches. Four-wheelers. In Wright County, you can ride four-wheelers in the ditch. Side-by-sides, which are like your Ranger, not a four-wheeler, but a Ranger, or something where it has two seats, or four, or six. You can ride them on a county road. They are street legal, because they have to have headlights, brake lights, blinkers.
Is there a legal age you have?
So, yeah, so...
You have to be a licensed driver to drive them.
You have to have, it's a certain age, and you have to have, it's like snowmobile, where you have to have the class and an actual driving course passed.
You were born after July 1st, 1987. Minnesota law requires you to complete a safety course.
Yep. So, so if we did, so if you did allow, what you're seeing would still be illegal and would be, like, what you're seeing, like, an eight-year-old driving would be a ticket or would be an illegal action if we had them or not. So, I'm just saying, like...
Yeah, I'd like to see ATVs. I don't have an interest in allowing. I think we're fine with that. I think side-by-sides that are street legal with the lights, the brakes. Now, again, following the road, just, I'd hate that a 10-year-old's now ruined it for people who do follow. I mean, that's a whole different thing.
Yeah, like, that's a...
Take a car out, too, and we're not gonna now ban cars, but... I, I don't know. I just...
I would be open to having side-by-sides in city limits.
I mean, we have noise ordinance. We have, I mean, there's other laws, but, and we can get some more information. Like I said, someone approached me about it, so I said we'll bring it up, and I think it made good sense, and when we...
People have talked about it on the, the community page, just asking what the ordinance is.
And I've seen...
And saying they like living out in the country, you know, like, this is, you're kind of, I mean, not like you're in the country, but they are street legal. And we can look...
Side-by-sides are, but not the ATV.
Correct, correct.
And, you know, we're seeing golf carts going around the neighborhoods, too, and...
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe we just be very specific.
They don't have lights. A lot of them don't.
Can we find out what other cities around us, what their ordinances are?
Yeah, let's, let's see what they're doing, but...
Have ordinances on them?
Yeah.
So, that means you'd just be able to ride them?
Well, I have to follow state law.
Majority of them, side-by-sides are allowed, like, in residential areas. County roads, like you said, a lot of the rural towns, small towns have a major highway going through them, that's a state highway, they cannot cross a state highway.
So they will. I think we should, I think.
Reach out to the sheriff, too, and see what their philosophies are on them.
Yeah.
While they're handling them.
Yep, yeah, let's do that, and then we'll, we'll talk about it again, and nothing has to be done right now. All right, anything more on that? All right, we are adjourned.